First of all, we'd like to start it off with our morning prayer and pledges. And with that, we're going to bring up the great Gary Jenkins for the prayer.
Good morning, Mayor and council members.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Will you pray with us as we begin this meeting? Father in heaven, in Jesus's name, we bow before you, the author and finisher of our faith, to say thank you for this day. We thank you for this great city that we live in. We thank you, Lord, for our mayor, the Honorable Tom Thompson, and to all of the members of the city council, to all of those that are in positions of leadership in city and county and state government. We thank you, Father, for this opportunity to come before your presence and to pray over this executive body. We ask you now to also help us to remember the family of Charlie Kirk, and as our hearts go out to them, and we ask you to comfort that family following the tragic assassination of this great conservative political activist. And we ask you, Lord, to touch America and deliver us from the violence and from the evil that is running rampant across this nation. We pray, Father, that you bless our city council as they take on the business of the city. And we ask you to bless each and every one that's here today, that San Angelo will continue to be a city where people can come, live, prosper, do business, and give glory to you. This we pray, in Jesus's name. Amen. And amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of Washington, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Honored the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, one and indivisible.
We have three proclamations this morning, and I think this is how we're going to do it. I'd like to call up the group that's going to accept the proclamation to come up here as I read it. So the first one I'm going to do is the Hispanic Heritage Month. So anybody involved with Hispanic Heritage Month, come on down. Come on, Manny. Start making it. How are you? How are you all? Everybody in line? Got the tall guy right in the center? That's great. Perfect. That's how I would do it. That's how I do it. All right, y'all, let's light this. Okay. Hispanic Heritage Month. The San Angelo Hispanic Heritage Museum and Cultural Center recognizes the invaluable contributions of Hispanic and Latino Americans to the history, culture, and achievements of the United States. Hispanic Heritage Month is observed nationwide from September 15th to October 15th, a time that encompasses the independence of anniversaries in several Latin American nations, including Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua, Mexico, and Chile. The Hispanic community in San Angelo and throughout West Texas continues to be a vibrant, integral part of our region, enriching our city through leadership in education, business, the arts, public service, and cultural traditions that reflect centuries of resilience, creativity, and strength. The San Angelo Hispanic Heritage Museum and Cultural Center is dedicated to preserving and sharing the stories, history, and legacy of the Hispanic and Latino community, ensuring that future generations understand and appreciate the vital role Hispanic Americans have played in shaping our shared identity. Through education, celebration, and reflection, Hispanic Heritage Month provides an opportunity for all members of our community to learn about and honor the diverse cultures, languages, and histories that unite us. Therefore, I, Tom Thompson, mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2025, as Hispanic Heritage Month, and encourage all residents to join in recognizing, celebrating, and honoring the enduring contributions of Hispanic and Latino Americans to our community, our state, and our nation, in recognition of their continuing efforts to promote peace and understanding throughout San Angelo, Texas, and the surrounding area. Woo-hoo! I'm going to need somebody to come say some words. So who's up first? Manny? Oh, Manny brought a speech. Hey, thank you. You're good. You told me I had 45 minutes. So here we go. Good morning, Mayor Thompson, members of the city council, and friends. On behalf of the San Angelo Hispanic Heritage Board, I want to thank you for this morning's proclamation and recognition. We are grateful for your leadership and for taking the time to honor the history, culture, and contributions of Hispanic families right here in San Angelo. This proclamation is more than words. It represents the pride of generations, the stories of our parents and grandparents, and the commitment of so many who continue to serve and enrich our community. By recognizing this month, you remind us all that San Angelo's strength comes from its diversity and from the unity we build together. Thank you again, Mayor Thompson and council, for starting this month off with the celebration with us, supporting the work of persevering and sharing our heritage. Thank you. Was there anybody else? All right, let's get a photo. Order people to the front. Just saying. Y'all slide. Yes. Bye. Come on down. You just have the big tag? Daniel down here? Coming, coming on. Oh, got a poster. Sweet. Worst picture I've ever taken. Let's put it on everything.
Looks like you're going hunting.
It does. It does. All right, everybody ready? Let's go. Chase, shall we start?
Yeah.
Okay, as long as I have your permission, I'll get going. All right. All right. The City of San Angelo proudly recognizes Meals for the Elderly, a locally owned, operated nonprofit organization that has served our community for over 50 years, delivering nutritious meals, wellness checks, and heartfelt connection to seniors and homebound neighbors. Meals for the Elderly is a committed member of the National Meals on Wheels American Network, while remaining an independent and community-rooted entity dedicated to improving the lives of older adults in San Angelo and surrounding areas. The organization's mission is made possible through the tireless efforts of volunteers, staff, donors, and community partners who champion the dignity, independence, and well-being of our senior neighbors. On September 16th and September 18th, 2025, Meals for the Elderly will host Community Champions Days, celebrating the contributions of 30 community champions, a diverse group of city leaders, journalists, artists, and community advocates who will help share the organization's mission and personally deliver meals to seniors and homebound individuals across the city. These community champions exemplify the spirit of service and solidarity, raising awareness and inspiring others to support Meals for the Elderly through volunteerism, advocacy, and generosity. Therefore, I, Tom Thompson, mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim September 16th, 2025, and September 18th, 2025, as Meals for the Elderly Community Champions Days, and encourage citizens to recognize the profound impact of this organization and its champions, and to take part in building a more caring and connected community for our seniors. Go. Would somebody like to speak, Susanna? Just saying.
Okay, I guess it's me. So thank you, Mayor, city council, city manager, for recognizing our community champions. We are honoring Laura Lee Lewis this year as well. She was an honorary champion, so I just wanted to mention that. Meals for the Elderly has been serving homebound seniors for more than 50 years with meals, compassion, and dignity. Our community champions helped to shine a light on the mission, and the social media campaign has already reached nearly half a million views. So I encourage everyone to please follow us on Facebook, follow our social media. It's really been a phenomenal campaign, and we're excited that there's been so much awareness for the needs of our homebound seniors. Today, I also want to recognize Norma Lee Dietz. It's her one-year anniversary for Meals for the Elderly. So thank you, Norma. And thank you for your support and this recognition, and we want to invite you all to please come attend our dueling pianos on October 16th and support our homebound neighbors. Thank you.
If you'll give me just a second to sign this, we'll have a signed one right here. We'll take the photo with that. Riff, are you in the back? Chief? Your presence has been requested at the front, and there's not a fire, an emergency? And while he did outshoot me at the West Texas Rehab Shoot, he was using illegal equipment, and he had unfair advantage. He and Judge Carter had an unfair advantage. Get your notes. Can I have someone here that represents the Peace Ambassadors of West Texas? Awesome. Anywhere you want. The Peace Ambassadors of West Texas concentrate on spreading peaceful relations throughout the community, the Contra Valley, through their mission of promoting peace through understanding, education, and building relationships. On September 16th, 2025, we recognize both the Peace Ambassadors and the promotion of peace on this 44th Annual International Day of Peace. The peace theme of this year's International Day of Peace being "Act Now for a Peaceful World." Therefore, I, Tom Thompson, mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim September 21st, 2025, as Peace Ambassadors of West Texas Day of Peace, in recognition of their continuing efforts to promote peace and understanding throughout San Angelo, Texas, and the surrounding area. Awesome. Who's going to say some words? Valerie, we'll let you do it.
Thank you, Mayor Thompson and city council members, for affirming this proclamation and passing it, which affirms the significance of peace not only everywhere but in our community. Peace Ambassadors of West Texas since 1904 has been fulfilling a mission of promoting peace through understanding, education, and building relationships. We try to achieve these goals through missions such as peace vigils every month on various topics, which overall, hopefully, are relevant to many sectors of the community. We also cook breakfast for Navigation Day every month, thereby serving the homeless and very low-income people in our community. We are in the process of developing a Peace Builders Academy for children and youth that will be coming soon. And in addition to our regular activities, we try to recognize significant days of peace throughout the year, such as Juneteenth, Nelson Mandela Day, and this International Day of Peace, and the celebration for that will be this Sunday afternoon at Civic League Park. I'm deeply grateful to all of our members and supporters, and to Mary Tufts for writing this proclamation and proposing it to the council. Again, grateful to Mayor Thompson, to you, and to the council for passing this significant resolution.
Members of the public may raise issues or concerns not listed on the regular agenda during this time. To participate, please sign in with the city clerk. Prior to the beginning of the meeting, speakers will be called in order they signed in. When speaking, citizens must speak from the podium, address all comments to the dais, begin by stating your name and address or single-member district number, and limit their remarks to three minutes or less. Heather, do we have any public comment?
Yes, sir. Michelle Genovese?
Thank you so much. You're quite welcome.
And thank you, Mayor and members of council. I am the Public Information Officer for the Small Business Administration's Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience. I am in town for the next two weeks or so, reaching out to the survivors of the flooding that happened back in July. We are here to provide alternate funding to help the survivors recover and get back to pre-disaster condition. Our program can provide loans to help these survivors, again, repair or replace any of their damaged items, their homes. We also provide working capital for businesses. And normally, our capital access side of SBA does not help out nonprofits, landlords, tenants, but on our disaster side, we do. We open it up to everybody so that we can help everybody, so that businesses don't close.
So will you repeat that of who's eligible?
Eligible persons, anybody that owns a home that was affected by that disaster. Anybody that was renting a home, that tenant is eligible for a disaster loan. A business, including nonprofits, which include homeowners' associations and churches, we provide them the ability to repair or replace their damaged property, and also we provide working capital for those businesses that have been affected. And additionally, we also have contiguous counties, so that your neighboring businesses, maybe they were doing businesses here in San Angelo, and those businesses shut down. Well, it's going to affect another business when they've lost their contracts or services. So that's why we reach out to everybody if you know somebody that's been affected. We have a center opened up at 69 North, I can't say it, I'm sorry, I'm from New York. Shepburn?
Chadburn.
Chadburn?
Close enough.
Okay, thank you. Yep, we have a center there with people that can walk people through the system, but it's as easy as going to our website at sba.gov to get this information and apply for it simply by adding your state, your county, and the date of the disaster. So again, if you know anybody that needs assistance, please refer them over to us. I have some fact sheets that show more details about our program, and I'll drop them off over here, but thank you so much for your time.
Michelle, we thank you very much. If you'll leave that with Heather, our clerk. And number two, I'm sure our Public Information Department is all over this, hidden back behind the one-way mirror, and they will get this posted on our page. For anybody that's watching, they will be able to pull this up on our website in less than five hours. No pressure.
Thank you so much, Mayor Thompson. I appreciate your time.
You bet. Thank you.
Hey, Michelle, what's the interest rate on that?
Oh, our home loans are at 2.813%, and businesses are at 4%. So we don't want to, you know, do too much damage to the local banks, but again, these loans come direct from the Federal Reserve, so they're going to get a Treasury check. They don't have to deal with other people. We have call centers that are open late to answer all of those questions.
Deal. Just play that the credit, if the credit score doesn't have any bearing on what they get. So thank you very much for that.
We do look at credit, but I always, as a former loan officer with the Small Business Administration, I've been there since 1998, I always called ourselves lenient lenders because we look at the whole story. What was the reason for that bad credit? So again, we're very lenient lenders. We help people. We also have refinancing and relocation. Maybe somebody wants to move into a safer location.
Thank you, Michelle.
I have that ability.
Thank you. Heather, any more public comment?
And Anna Bartosz.
Anna.
Anna Bartosz, single-member District One. Good morning, Mayor, council, city manager. I just wanted to, I don't know if y'all are aware, last week, I looked at our tap water, and it was yellow. I filled my porcelain sink just to make sure, and sure enough, it was a nice pale yellow. Just wondering what that was that colored our tap water, that color, is it safe? And then I read about dumping into the Contra River highly-treated sewage, and so what does highly-treated mean? Because a lot of times, I think I understand, but I'm old enough to know I need to get definitions of things, so those are my comments. Thank you.
Cool. Thank you, Anna. With that, I will say, if you will catch Shane Kelton, can we bring him up here now? Let's throw Shane up here on the grill right quick and talk about the tap water and the lake inversion from Lake Ivy. I know you're really complimenting me on your way up here, Shane.
I'll say it anyway.
Well, but I mean, it's something we've all seen, and it's, we've all talked about and discussed it.
Yeah, no, we did actually have two events over the last three weeks or so where we did see, we had some event at Lake Ivy, which is our main source of water for the city, and so whether it was an inversion or something, something's going on in the lake where we actually did, we caught a really dirty slug of water coming into the water treatment plant, and it did cause, due to the magnesium content in the water, actually did, it's one of those things, we can't treat color, and so treat for color in our plant, and so since it's a traditional surface water plant, we don't have any membranes or RO or anything, any of those other processes, so we really can't treat for color, and so we did get, like I said, high magnesium. We did see a spike in magnesium coming into the plant along with higher organics, and so that did cause the first discoloration. We did see a second event that followed after we got, pretty much had everything cleared out from the first event, and then we saw a second event come in the following weekend where we didn't see a really dirty slug of water, but we did see another spike in magnesium. And of course, magnesium will turn the water a light yellowish-brownish kind of color, which is what everybody was seeing in the distribution system when they turned on the tap. The water was safe to drink, safe to consume. We met all safety standards as regards, we didn't go over any MCLs, and so again, it was, while it was discolored and not appealing to the eyesight, it was, when we consider what we believe water should look like coming out of a tap, it didn't look like that, but again, it was safe to consume, to touch, to bathe in, all of those things.
So the best way to cure this is flush this through the system and pull it all the way through?
That's it, and we did. We had crews out immediately. Once we knew it hit the system, we were trying to get that slug of colored water out of our distribution system. We sent crews everywhere that we were receiving color complaints, we would send crews out, and we would start flushing, flushing the distribution system, try to move that water, that colored water through our system faster and quicker.
Cool. Thank you, Shane. I appreciate it. Heather, do we have any more public comment?
Mayor, if I actually may, and council members, I want to introduce our new Animal Services Manager. Amanda, you'll come up here real quick. Her name is Amanda Wedle. She comes to us with 25 years of experience in animal care and 16 years of experience in animal services, and we're bringing her in from Frisco, Texas, and we're very happy, very honored to have her here on our staff.
Welcome home, Amanda. We'll welcome you here first. Can you give us a brief, maybe a little bit of bio and history?
Absolutely.
What you had before you got here?
So I have been in animal care since I was 15 years old. I started in veterinary through high school, and then when I moved to College Station, I found animal services and found a love for it. I have been in animal services for 16 years. I am a state and nationally certified animal services officer, and a state and nationally certified cruelty officer, and a cruelty investigator through TACA, the Texas Animal Control Association, as well as NACA, the National Animal Control Association. I have done extensive studies on shelter protocols, as well as worked in several shelters doing high adoption protocols for shelters that don't have as many rescue options and things of that nature available to them, as well as being a field training officer for the officers. My big stance is public safety, as well as making sure that we have community engagement, community education for responsible pet ownership, overpopulation, and proper care.
Thank you for that. We're glad and welcome onboard, and when was your first day?
Yesterday.
Awesome. Welcome to day number two. Quite a day for you.
Absolutely. I'm excited.
All right, Amanda, thank you.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thank y'all.
I will throw in one more piece of public comment. I know Heather gives me the look. Joe, is Lakeview 3-0?
No.
Okay, just saying. Lakeview's 3-0, all right. With that, we'll move into the consent agenda, and I will move down the dais, asking anyone if they have any items to pull. Mary, have you got anything you want to pull? Karen?
No, sir.
Patrick?
No, sir.
I have nothing to pull. Harry?
Nothing.
Joe?
No, sir.
Mr. Hebert?
No.
With no items to pull.
I approve.
I have them first from Karen.
Second.
Second from Joe. Do we have any public comment on any of the consent agenda? With that, we'll take a vote. All in favor of proving consent agenda items A through E, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? Consent agenda passes 7-0. Now we'll move into the regular agenda. Comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed, as outlined above. To participate, please sign in with the city clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. Speakers will be called in order they are signed in. Comments are limited to less than three minutes. Applicants, proponents, and appellants are exempt from the time limit above, and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. We will move into item A. Consider awarding ASO 2-25 to the Contra Valley Paws for Animal Rescue Services in the amount of $162,000, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all necessary documents, or, in the alternative, reject such proposal. Consider implementing in-house programming for such services. Presentation by Neighborhood Family and Services, Angela Bloss, interim assistant director. It's all yours, Angela.
Thank you. Good morning, council, mayor, and Daniel. I'm Angela Bloss, the assistant director, interim assistant director of Neighborhood and Family Services. So we're coming to you all today with, we need some direction. So as you're aware, our contract with Contra Valley Paws ends 9/30 of this year, and so we're just looking for some direction from y'all.
Actually, with that, if I may, Mayor?
Actually, with that, if I may, Mayor?
Absolutely.
We did get a submission from Paws. We just sent out a, the bids for the different animal rescue groups, and did get a submission for Paws. We're grateful for that. I do want to state that I am, as a city, we're very grateful for the many years of partnership that we've had with Paws and the vital role they have played in supporting the animal shelter. Their commitment has helped countless animals find loving homes, and the city extends sincere appreciation for the service, their service to our community. So thank you so much to Paws for that. But I do, with that, want to say that a recent review of shelter operations to, to also include a recommendation was to actually do this service in-house. And we are looking forward to actually moving forward with the in-house service. So basically, our shelter staff will be providing all animal services in-house. The, we pray and our hopefulness is that we have the full participation of all the animal rescue groups moving forward to pull animals from our shelter and assist with the adoption process. Again, my recommendation is to reject the bid and move forward with an in-house shelter operation on this.
So I have some questions here. We've been in this relationship for five years, end of a five-year contract that we started in 2020. My first concern is, do we have the capability with staff and resources? Because Paws provided some volunteers, some, I'd say some assets and manpower that we didn't have to provide. And when you weighed that out against the money initially, it was by far in our favor to keep things with Paws, just by what resources they provided. Now, with the fact that we've hired a new director at the animal shelter, I need to know where that sits. And I would hope council has those same concerns to weigh this out before we come to a consensus.
It's a good question, Mayor. Basically, on our end, we have been working toward this in, in making sure that we're prepared to move forward. As far as having an individual in-house, this is going to be a person, really, that'll be handling the adoption portion of it. So we are prepared to do that. There's other, other details that we're working through. I was being really careful. I have my plans, everything, some of the things laid out that I would love to do moving forward. But out of respect for our new shelter manager coming in, we'll be working very closely. It started yesterday, actually. We had several, a couple of meetings. And we'll be working out the, ironing out the details of what we'll be doing as far as transitioning. But we're, we feel confident that the transition can be easily managed by our staff. There may be some bumps in the road along the way initially, but we will move forward and do this. We've done it in the past, so I'm confident we can do it again.
Okay. So you're, you're confident that we have the staff and the capability, the resources to handle this, even through the transition of the remodel?
Even through the transition, the remodel, all that's been considered as well. So on our end, we want to make sure that we do, as stated a while ago, actually, when Amanda came up here, our first priority, of course, is public health and safety. That'll always be public health and safety for us. But we also know that animal welfare is a key point and also a, one of our missions there with the city and the animal shelter. So yes, on our end, I wouldn't be sitting here making a recommendation unless I didn't feel like we could actually transition and do this job ourselves.
So how would we handle adoptions? Angela, how would we handle adoptions?
I'm going to be honest with you. I don't have a plan at this moment. We were kind of waiting for direction from y'all. But I, once we get that direction, we're willing to sit down. I know Amanda's very excited and more than capable of coming up with a plan. So we would come up with a plan. Within our current budget at the moment, would, but as I told Daniel, he would have to be flexible with us to move and to pivot when we need to make changes, and then if we needed extra funding.
We will transition a staff member. I want to make sure that that's understood as well. We will be transitioning a staff member to handle specifically the adoption itself. Though it's not like we don't have a plan whatsoever. I mean, at this point, there's been a lot of discussion, a lot of, as far as planning, as far as what the transition's going to look like. Do we have it set up right now? No, we don't have it set up right now, but it will be set up.
So what are some of our options? I mean, I think it's very important we at least have some options before we move in this without, with just a blank slate.
Of course.
So what are options that we have here, Dana?
Options, again, as I mentioned a while ago, is use one of our current staff members. We actually have a part-timer at this point that can step in, that will be doing the adoption. We have, I've been speaking to other individuals, one in particular, that has knowledge and experience in, in volunteerism and bringing volunteers in, and even the, the other animal rescue groups. I've met with the other animal rescue groups, and the discussion has been that we need the full participation from everyone to pull animals from our shelter. It won't be specifically just one animal rescue group that'll be doing this, but the, we have several animal rescue groups in our community. Several of them served on the task force, and there was a lot of discussion also as far as what we would require from everyone. Everyone has to work together on this. Again, we're going to be managing what we have going on within our shelter to make sure that we don't have the numbers that overpopulate our shelter and we don't have the ability to really function. We want to make sure that we maintain that with an open intake. But in our end, there's going to be a lot of legwork, a lot of meetings, a lot to do with having folks that have a similar mission to get the animals adopted out, that we want to step in and assist with this whole process as well.
So my question here is, how do we create fairness amongst what we put up for adoption? So is ever going, is everybody going to be able to work adoptions? I mean, to me, I see that as a benefit, having five groups, or six, or seven, or 10. But how do you be fair on who gets the pretty puppies and who gets the ugly ones?
We would love to be able to adopt them.
I know, I know that sounds rude, but I mean, that's always been a question. You'll get that on email, was they get first choice, and then what's left over is something that's not as desirable. My, my biggest concern about this is, how do you determine who's going to work randomly and work what adoptions?
I mean, the only fair way to be first come, first served, so having that outcome specialist would be the primary contact, and then whoever contacted them first, in my opinion, that would be the only fair way.
It would. I think if anything, it does need to become a first come, first serve. It can't be just one group that actually gets to pull the animals, but really a first come, first served, which encourages everyone to participate in this. No one wants to feel like there is a disadvantage. Everybody wants to feel like, you know, we do have a fair opportunity to select the animals that we are really interested in adopting out. I would love to have all the animals adopted out and that they could find a home, but it does kind of turn into a first come, first served, basically.
Well, and I get first come, first served, where I'll go with that. What I know is, when you do first come, first serve from rodeo tickets, sometimes people can dominate first. All right? They can put the power and the resources to be up there. You have to be able to work in a fair and consistent pattern to provide everybody. Kind of, now that doesn't allow somebody to be lazy and say, well, it's my turn in the rotation. I didn't get up there, but I still get choice. But there, there's going to have to be some onsite management here to maintain fairness and consistency. But I do see a benefit in working with all the groups.
Absolutely. And my commitment, of course, to the city council and everyone is, I'm going to be directly involved with the animal shelter. We already started establishing, especially how we're going to meet. It's going to be a lot of teamwork, a lot of reviews, a lot of changes based on what went right and what went wrong, how we're implementing our strategy, our plan, and do follow-ups on that to tweak and make changes if necessary. But again, you'll have my commitment and complete involvement in animal shelter.
Okay. With that, I'd like to open up with the dais and work from Mary Cross, and we'll ask some questions.
I have one question. With the, the resources as far as hiring additional people, I know, Daniel, you were talking about converting, you know, some part-times into, you know, the task force, and I, I just wanted to clarify, I think sometimes there can be confusion, and frankly, I would get confused just with the terminology. You know, we have the advisory committee, but then we also have that task force that was specific, specific for really dissecting this whole deal. And the task force recommended hiring, essentially doubling our, our staff. So they are recommending four.
ASOs?
Yes, four ASOs. Is, and so Amanda is one of those. Are we going to do those three additional in this year, or?
No.
What is the timeframe?
No, the goal is, of course, we converted, we do have a staff member now that's, is a converted ASO. And we also have budgeted to hire additional ASO this year. Now, the plan is for next year, as we start budgeting, that we budget for the additional two, to get us to that four ASOs that we're talking about. And Amanda is not, I mean, she is, she is a senior ASO. She really has wonderful experience, but she's actually the shelter manager. She'll be running operations there.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, that, just kind of staying on target there. And I'm sure other questions will come up as we kind of work through this.
And I will say, we do have one new one that we're still training and one that is still fairly new. So that'll give us time to train, get those fully trained before we add on new ones.
Going in the right direction, Amanda. Thank you, Angela.
Of course.
Karen? Are you sure? Patrick?
Good morning. So this is, it's interesting timing, getting the new director at the same time, so I realize she's just now coming into it. But has she had experience with both? Has she had experience with city-run shelters, adoptions? Do you know?
Um, I believe so, yes. But we'll let her answer.
I'm going to throw you in the fire, day two.
During my tenure in Lewisville, we actually had a older shelter that was not updated or anything of that nature. I was an animal services officer. However, I ran pet portal, I ran the adoptions, I coordinated with the rescues. So I do have extensive knowledge of that. With, with Frisco, we did not have a shelter, but I did work heavily with the adoption and foster coordinators at the Collin County Animal Shelter, where we did contract with. And so I've actually got a lot of contacts to help us transition into this, to where we make sure that we are doing everything proper.
Do you think we're, I mean, we're already in the, the end of the lease. Do you think this is something that we can effectively get done in time to save, basically save as many pets and get them adopted as possible?
I absolutely do. Through conversations with Daniel, with Angela, I believe that we've got an action plan in place to get the layout within the next week or so, and have it ready to implement within two weeks.
Thank you. Patrick? Mary Thomas?
Very quickly, we have fulfilled a number of the requests from the task force. And I think we need, we need to move on down the road and, and let the animal shelter do what they need to do. What we were doing before wasn't working. We had too many dogs on the road. I think we're, I think this, this is going to help us. And as Daniel said, maybe a few bumps in the road. But for some of us that have been up here, especially Mr. Hebert and I, for nine years, eight years, whatever the case may be. We have gone through many, many renditions of trying to get animal services on the right thing. And every time somebody says, okay, so I'm in favor of letting the animal services organization take this and run with it. And if they have to come back to us to tweak it a little bit, I'm good with it.
I wasn't on council when the task force presented, but I was in the audience. And I think this goes along with what the task force wanted us to do, as well as you got to start somewhere. So I think it's a step in the right direction. It still gives the other adoptions ability to work with them. So I'm, I think it's a good thing.
Hebert?
Couple of questions. Daniel, you mentioned public health and safety in your remarks. That has been my, I, I think what I have said consistently throughout the process, whatever we do, however we do it, my main, two main concerns with animal services are public health and safety. Can you put a little bit more meat on those bones, Daniel, with respect to the, the aspect of addressing public health and safety?
Yes, sir. Public health and safety, of course, recently, this past year, you know, we, we did move toward an open intake. Previously, we would, somebody could pick up a stray animal, take it out to the shelter, and if it was, if the shelter was full, they were told to take it back, and there was, the animal was probably likely close its home anyway, about a block or two away. That, for me, was a dangerous proposition, to tell someone to take an animal back and, and leave it loose, drop it off and leave it loose. We're not doing that any longer. We're making absolutely sure that we're keeping our shelter, our intake open. You know, I, I hate the idea, the thought of euthanizing animals, but I know that that's something that is inevitability, that we'll end up having to do. We know that in order to really truly address the, having fewer animals out there in, in the community at, at large, is we really have to make sure that we're developing, hopefully working very closely with animal rescue groups, really working on a really solid spay-neuter program that really addresses, ensuring that the, the animals out there aren't populating and aren't running loose. You know, so that's going to be a key part of what we're working toward as well. Conversation, of course, meetings that we had yesterday, and other works that we've been doing. We want to make sure that we're addressing it that way. So that's a great question. We want to make sure, again, public health and safety is key and number one for us. And that's what we're going to be working toward.
You mentioned also, just then, spay and neuter. I'm going to look to Amanda and Angela. Have y'all already begun discussing a, a much more robust spay and neuter initiative on a go-forward basis?
We are looking at several different avenues and different ideas to boost the compliance of spay and neuter, as well as how to properly make sure that every animal that is exiting the shelter through adoption, transfer, rehab, is going with it being spayed and neutered.
And I, I think you also, you mentioned the word compliance. I think that's going to be, we, we have to demand compliance through, through whatever means, legal means that we have. So I hope that's part of y'all's discussion, too, to gain, gain, seemingly from what the, what we heard from the task force, we may not have had as much compliance as maybe what we should have. So I hope that's a part of it, too.
Tommy, and I can, I'm sorry, I mean, interrupt to you. Tommy, I know that Amanda's reviewing the recommendations made by the task force as well, as far as some of the ordinance changes. As a matter of fact, she has some thoughts and ideas on that as well. But that is going to be key as well. I failed to mention that a while ago. When you started looking at public health and safety, is making sure that we're truly enforcing our ordinances that are already in place anyway, and also making the changes necessary to make them stronger. So that's something, another area that we'll be keying on, in making sure that we have that in place.
You took my next question out of my mouth. So thank, thank you, thank you for what you just said. Two, two questions for clarification, just for me. How many current, today, as we, as we have this conversation, how many ASOs do we have?
I'm going to refer to her because I'm still learning.
Sure.
With Carlos, it would be one, two, three, four, five, six? Yes, six.
Okay, that, that's fair. I just, I just didn't know the number. Okay, so six. And Daniel, for you, I thought we authorized in the budget this year two additional ASOs this year. Is that not correct?
Yes, sir. We're going from four to six, actually. So that's the number that you just reported. So then next year, we'll be up to eight, and that's the number that was, that was actually recommended.
Okay. That's where the, where the additional, okay. Thank you. I, I didn't, I didn't get that. Mayor, that's all the questions I've got.
So I have a question. When you look at the key obligations that we shared between us and Paws, Paws also took the, basically, the compliance, fee schedules, forms, certifications. There's a lot of liability in the adoption process that they carried on their shoulders. Does that just fall on us? It's going to have to. I mean, I don't know how we do that moving forward, but in the litigious society we have today, quite often we have to worry about liability.
Absolutely.
And it's, sometimes it's to the city's benefit to place that on somebody else's shoulders and let them have that. But, so Brandon, will we can, or carry the same standard policies?
Yeah, absolutely. But I mean, even with the current Paws arrangement, I mean, they're our agent. So we're, while they may indemnify us in the contract, that doesn't necessarily mean, you know, we wouldn't get involved in litigation due to their actions. So I mean, to answer your questions, yes, we are taking on more. But at the same time, we kind of also have that with the current arrangement.
Okay. With that, any additional questions? Patrick?
Daniel, this went out to all the rescues to basically bid on this proposal, correct?
We advertised it and met with Jeffrey to make sure that that was, went out to our purchasing manager, to make sure it went out to all the animal rescue groups. Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
As a follow-up to our city manager's comment about the RFP, I am aware that As a follow-up to our city manager's comment about the RFP, I am aware that organizations were unfamiliar with the fact that that posted publicly. So can you, can you give a little public direction on how we might proceed going forward? How would they know? And where would they go to find the post? And how would they properly respond?
Our procedure, really with any proposal that goes out, is we typically have a list of names as far as contractors, businesses we've done business with in the past. And for us, we don't just advertise it, we actually also send an invitation to different groups. And I think that's probably the best way to do it, is because folks that are, maybe not so much like with animal shelter, but when you look at others that bid on projects that the city puts out, they're very well aware that we'll be advertising, they're looking at the advertisement. We will also send out invitations to the folks that we have on our list. So we want to make sure that we get as many bids as possible in all different areas within the city. But those are the two, the main ways that we do that, is advertisement and invitation as well.
So interested parties should be scanning for posts on a regular basis. And can you confirm that local entities, other than PAWS, received an invitation?
Sure. I mean, I had to go visit with each one of them individually. I know that I had a meeting with a group of folks that had mentioned they didn't get theirs. And I did tell them that actually they, they go out. So my end, even then, I was saying, hey, no, 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 actually, we even have it, we do have it on our side. We have it to where people can actually pull that information. But again, after I had that meeting with the ladies, I went and met with Jeffrey and said, hey, I just want to confirm, I want to make sure that we sent out those invitations to all the different groups. And he confirmed that, so.
Thank you for that. And I would like to confirm, as a member of the council, that I stand ready to support Amanda as a volunteer in any way that she finds she can put me to work. And I know there are others seated up here that feel the same way. So, welcome.
And I feel the same way. You can put Karen to work as long as you want. Exactly how I feel.
I've told everybody, I'm ready to hit the ground running.
All right. Okay, we've had a lot of discussion. We've got a lot to cover today. Any more questions before I ask for a motion? Well, good. Somebody got a motion?
I'll make a motion that we follow the city manager's recommendation that we move this to an in-house programming for animal services.
Tommy, just to clarify, that is rejecting the bid from PAWS also?
That is correct. You want me to say that?
Yeah, rephrase.
Okay, all right.
Just so we're clear.
I make a motion that we reject the bid from PAWS for 162,000, and that we implement the in-house programming for animal services per our city manager's recommendation.
I have a first.
First from Tommy. I have a second from Harry Thomas. Heather, do we have any public comment?
Jotun Giesi?
Hi, Jotun Giesi, District Five. I had a lot to say. Thank y'all for your recommendations. I just do want to beg that y'all will cut, do what you can to cut the supply and find money for a voucher program for the public. You know, I'll work, volunteer with a couple of rescues. And we are seeing those numbers increase. We have people coming and getting vouchers, multiple vouchers. Our policy is one per household per month. Many times we go off that, we find somebody that's trying to take care of a cat colony that they never did, they didn't sign up to do that. But we're, our numbers are at high, as high as they can go, just about. And we are going to, there's a chance we're gonna start turning people away. So the demand is there. People are trying to, you know, take in animals and get them fixed and help with the community. They just, it's not the best job to do it for free. I'm not asking that they, you know, lower their prices, but we have to help them. Get some of those people compliant when they're there, you know, showing up in violation. Do something to help them. Or hopefully, they'll come and do it on their own. That's all. I just want to make sure that y'all are trying to look for funds for a spay neuter voucher program to help the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Jotun. Heather? Another public comment?
Yes, Heather Hegwood. Okay. And Sharon Hoffman.
Sharon? So did Heather pass?
She passed.
All right.
Good morning. Sharon Hoffman with Critter Shack. I live in Wall. I was gonna say thank you for your recommendations. I wholeheartedly agree with what you're saying. I think in-house services worked in the past, and I think that's an excellent way to move forward. I would encourage you to do what Jotun said, and please fund some money for spay neuter, for vouchers. That's the one way out of this overpopulation issue, and it's very important. And anybody that you spend now will save you money in the long run. We, and I believe Cassie's, I can speak for them, we got no, nothing in the mail for any kind of RFP. I didn't know to look on this website until it was too late. So we did not receive anything. But thank you for your recommendation.
Heather, anymore? All right. With that said, before we go to vote, I just want to say, regardless of the outcome here, since I've been on here since 2017, I've seen outstanding commitment and obligations, not only through public comment, but through the service of PAWS, all the way across the board, from everybody here. Your care and passion towards taking care of the pets of San Angelo, while we have been lagging, we have done a lot of changes, and we have, working through handicaps and handcuffs financially, we have put a lot of money into our animal shelter. And with that, I think we're gonna see progress. But I want to point out that there are a lot of assets we're providing now that we did not provide the previous seven, eight years. So with that, we'll go ahead and move forward. We'll take a vote. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven oh.
Thank you.
With that, we're going to move into item B, considering appeal by the Public Works Executive Director and Planning and Development Services Director of Planning's Commission, August, hold on a minute, hearing on August 18th, 2025, approval of two variances associated with Elsie Guyer, Section One Final Platte, and sidewalk waiver appeal. With that, we're gonna make a motion to extend the appeal for 30 days. Is that how you like it worded, Brandon?
Yes, sir. So my understanding, the applicant is actually asked to extend it for 30 days. I think Aaron is in favor of that. So yes, motion to extend.
All right. So Aaron, will you just give us a little description and why we're doing the extension?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Aaron Vanoy, Director of Planning and Development Services. We are asking to table this item until October the 21st, so that we can work with the applicant to get some performance agreement items worked out, so that we can bring forward a united presentation to you guys of what the long-term impacts of this project would be. Both sides want to work together. And so we want to make sure that we're bringing together something that is viable for the city council to approve for this community.
Cool. With that, I'm gonna look for a motion.
I'll make the motion to extend for 30 days.
I got first from Tommy Hebert. I have a second, Karen Hesse Smith. Any public comment, Heather? Anybody sign up?
Rocky, do you want to make public comment? Rocky Templin?
Morning. Rocky Templin, senior member, District Six. I think that'd be a great idea to postpone this for 30 days, so they could run some numbers and try to figure out where we stand going forward. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for the words and wisdom, Rocky. Is there any more public comment?
No.
With that spoken, we'll look to take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven oh. Move on to item C, consider modification of an approved tax increment reinvestment zone incentive, funding a North Tiers project located at 216 West Fifth, totaling $44,063.14 to have paving and safety features on-site for gymnasium. Excuse me. This will vary the Tiers policy to allow for, prior to the letter, to proceed, construction items to be included in the funding request. Aaron, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, Mr. Valenzuela, Aaron Vanoy, Director of Planning and Development Services. You saw this item about six to eight weeks ago for a Tiers approval. It's coming forward with a modification. And as the mayor just read, it's really to change our policy for this project only, not our ongoing policies, but this project only, to allow a reimbursement for items that have already been constructed before we had an agreement in place. I'll go through the case real quickly. Again, you can see the, this are the original slides, where the original amount was the 75,000. Now, we've actually got real cost of what it cost them to put in. And so that's the $44,000 that's in front of you currently. The facility is here. They have done their paving in this area. We have worked through an agreement about paving back there that did not require it, because there were some concerns of doing some improvements back there may change the value of that property for the actual property owner, who these folks are just having an agreement with. And so we, they did some improvements to stabilize the base and things like that. So this is in District Three, Mr. Harry Thomas, downtown neighborhood. And the site improvements still say the same as in the ADA items. So this project has been a challenge for them. They're out of town, folks that are trying to bring a business here. They're working with things. They're, that should be first contractor did work without permits, which kind of complicated the project, kind of put them behind. They were, they had some good faith in what was going on. And then they found out that not everything was as it should have been. And so that's been challenging. But also with the analysis, they are repurposing a warehouse building and introducing a different business model of this area, which really is helping the area start to think about redevelopment over time. As we all know, every time you have a delay, development costs continue to rise for not just our community, but all community, but business owners. And they are trying to urgently meet some deadlines, so they can keep their business and operations going here. Tiers funds, while restricted in area use and availability, tend to be challenging for projects that have urgency, because we do have that, you can't get started until everything gets done. And so we're looking at that as a committee to see what can be appropriate for that. But again, this case here is to modify the policy to allow those improvements that have taken place. Again, you can see their site plan. While they do have parking back there, it is not paved, because they did not want to improve that pavement back there, which we agreed to as city staff. They do have it as improved parking. So we're very excited about that. They do have the paving and the marking. They did do some safety railing along there. So they've done a very good job of what they've done. They, they have been very urgently trying to move this forward. The applicants are here today. I don't think they were able to make it all the way from Odessa in time to sign up to speak, but they are here in the audience today. But staff does recommend the approval of moving forward with the policy amendment for this project only, and awarding the $44,063.14 to the property owners at 216. Previously, the city council did approve the 75,000 in private incentives. We will still get the, the contract done. Our staff has got that contract ready to be routed through. And we will move forward as quickly as we can to move that forward, if that's council's desire. With that, I'll take any questions.
Aaron, I just want to commend you for doing a good job. I realize that the process and the timing, people not understanding when they can proceed and move forward with the approval versus some things that are signed. But I think Planning did a wonderful job of making a common sense decision of, hey, everything was done here in good faith. While this is a one-time and one-time only, it sure helps everybody out, moves everything forward. And I appreciate what you've done with that. With that, I'll open it up for any questions for council. Harry?
So, you know, I don't want to penalize anybody for not following the rules, but how do we get in front of this? This is not the first time this has ever happened, since I've been on council, when, when people look at tiers. It's in the contract, is that correct?
It is. And I will say this first. This is my direct responsibility to make sure that applicants know the steps of the process. So when they come to apply, that they need to know what those steps are, and that they need to understand that they shouldn't get started with certain things. That's our current policies today. So that's my responsibility to make sure that those staff, not just our staff, but the actual application applicants know that. I would say, in this case, I would say, I probably didn't communicate that well enough to them to make sure they knew that. They had a couple of different parties that were helping them with the applications. We thought it was communicated, and it may not have been communicated as clearly enough. At the same time, this project has been going on for some time, and they're trying to get it moving forward. And so I realize that's, that's something, so I take that on as my responsibility to make sure that our applicants are informed completely about what the rules are.
Well, it's not the first time since I've been on council that I had to have a conversation with the owners of a property, because they started before. So I understand that. And I'll reiterate what Mayor said. Appreciate the staff working to get this done. It's something that needs to be done, improvement for that particular piece of property. I just want to get ahead of the curve on future stuff.
Yes, sir.
So I make a recommendation that we approve the stack of that condition.
Thank you. And we are working through our committee to redo the policies, to make them more simplified, and to make sure that that is an area that's highlighted forward for applicants to know that. So, thank you.
Here, we've, I've got a motion on the floor from Harry, but Patrick has a question.
Just real quick. On this, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, they had, I mean, it was kind of approved verbally, what they were doing, et cetera, before the work was actually done, right? It just hadn't been through all the, the legal process of it?
Correct. There's, there's a process that you have to get a letter to proceed before you can actually start doing the work. They did get approval through city council for the project and the funding. They had a contractor waiting, and it got started. I mean, they were, again, urgency trying to get the project moving forward.
Right. So I think this is a little different. And like, like Spin mentioned, I mean, it was all in good faith. This is a little different, I think, than somebody just going and doing it, and then kind of retroactively. And I'm part of the committee on the tiers, and that's something that we're trying to look for. Everybody wants business to run a little faster in San Angelo. So one of the ways is if we can get things approved a little faster, and then shows of good faith and things like that. So I think this is almost a test case in how we're going the right direction, and hopefully can, can make it smoother for businesses going forward.
Patrick, do you want to make that a second?
I second.
I have a first from Harry and a second. Any more questions? Any public comment? Awesome. With that, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, item C passes seven oh. Item D, first reading and public hearing of ROW 25-03, a request to abandon the alleyway that goes through the middle of the lot, and portion of the right-of-way along Vex Street at 528 Vex Street, presentation by Aaron Vanoy.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Aaron Vanoy, Director of Planning and Development Services. This is a little cleanup for a property owner that lives here on 528 Vex Street. His structure is there. You can see that he has actually some structures right there. That's an alleyway that was platted many, many years ago, has never been used, does not have city utilities. And so this project came forward to our planning commission. This is in District Three, Mr. Harry Thomas, just on the edge of the Paul Anne neighborhood. It is RS1, single-family zoning. It is vision with transitional, and that is mainly because there's a railroad that kind of comes through here, or the railroad comes through there. And it is a request of abandonment of some right-of-way, so the property owner can absorb that right-of-way into their property. The area is about 1,300 square feet of a platted alleyway, and about 1,300 or 1,400 square feet of the right-of-way in the front of the property. You can see right here, at the front of the property, there's a whole lot of area that we have as right-of-way that we, as the city, do not need. There's no utilities in that area. And so for them to have a little bit larger front yard, they're gonna basically scoot that line to the south. No portion of the abandonment has been improved or used for access. There are no city services within the area of the request, and the abandonment does not appear to affect any of the traffic patterns in the area. With that, staff recommends approval with the three conditions. Planning Commission did recommend approval for this project as well. There are just simple things that they actually heard the plat yesterday and able to move this project forward. My phone's vibrating. Excuse me. So with that, I will be happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions?
I have no questions, but I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
With no questions, I have a first from Harry Thomas. I have a second from Karen Hesse Smith. Any public comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, item carries seven oh. We'll move into item E, first reading and public hearing at ROW 25-02, request to abandon alleyway north with intersection of East 47th Street and Crockett Street, and abandon the dedication portion of Bonham Street between 48th and 47th. Aaron, you're on again.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Your phone's off.
Yes, sir.
I know it's the first time you've been here.
It is.
You and Michael Day. Was your phone ringing a while ago? We called you. Just calling you out.
This is another abandonment of an alleyway and an actual street. You can see here, this is 47th running along here. This is Crockett going north and south here. You can see that our street, 47th Street, kind of does run across some of their private property and so this is the first step to try to resolve some of that. The property owner here owns both of those lots. They want to make that into one lot to build a single-family house. The property owner here owns those two lots as well as these first lots there and so they're going to make that into one lot and one lot there. So this abandonment does help both of those property owners. This is in the Lakeview area, District Two, Mr. Joe Self. It is RS1 zoning. The vision is neighborhood and it is, again, the request to remove the alleyway and the street from being a public right-of-way into their properties being private. So it is quite a large area, 26,000 square feet, so that's a lot of area between the alleyway and the roadway. It is unimproved and does not have any utility services in those areas and currently does not affect the traffic patterns or anything like that because you can see 48th Street here is unimproved as well and as you go a few more blocks to the north, then you finally get to Lakeview Heroes Drive. So this is an area of infill and so this is one step for them to kind of infill those areas to the south. We've got a process that's going to help the properties to the north as well. This abandonment did go to Planning Commission with their recommended approval. Staff does recommend approval and the same three conditions that we have on all of our right-of-way abandonments. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions? I got a first from Joe Self, a second from Harry Thomas. Any public comment, Heather?
None.
With none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item E passes 7-0. F, first reading and public hearing of Z 25-20, request to rezone from the single-family residential zoning district to low-rise multifamily residential zoning district for the properties located at 611 North Jackson and 610 North Van Buren. Aaron, you're on.
Thank you again, Mayor. This is a rezoning for two small lots, one at 610 North Van Buren, one at 611 North Jackson. You can see them right here on our maps, right on the access road as well. And you can see that this area was cut across when Houston Hart came through here. It did modify a number of those lots. You can even see the one behind them that's just a sliver back there. So this is, again, very small lots. It's a request to rezone from RS1 to RM1 which allows a housing structure type that would actually fit on the lot and allows the right setbacks for that housing structure type. This is in District Four, Mr. Patrick Keely, and it is in the central neighborhood and the vision plan is neighborhood for this area. So you can see the vision plan there is neighborhood, so this area is continuing to be neighborhood. Again, on the right side, you can see that it is RS1 zoning. There is one spot that's got some RS2 zoning. These are the plans that they plan to do. This is the one on Van Buren. Obviously, it's a zero lot line house that the zero lot line will be here along the right-of-way. This is tech stop right-of-way, but it is a very large right-of-way that they have. And you can see with that curve and angle there onto Van Buren, there was a concern with staff at first of, all right, well, how are you going to access it? Well, their proposal is to actually access it through the alleyway here, which makes a lot more sense for access instead of trying to access off of that curve right there. It does meet the minimum setbacks for front yard as well as backyard as well as this side yard on this side with the zone change. Same thing with the lot behind. It's slightly larger. You can see they have slightly more front yard there. The right-of-way kind of tapers here towards the front, but again, a zero lot line house where they have access off the back. Their side yards slightly bigger just because they're able to move it over. This house sizes are very comparable to the other houses in the area. They're looking at around 1,200 to 1,300 square feet, so something that could still be very affordable with the small lot size. These lots have been unimproved for many decades and this actually puts a viable structure that starts making these, what we would call, producible lots in our infill projects through our community. We did send out notices. We did have some opposition. There were two oppositions, one that came in before the slides were made and then one that came in after. The comments were, and even at the comments at Planning Commission, were that they really didn't want additional rent houses and they really wanted something that was more what they would consider a single-family. Well, this is a, RM1 is a single-family structure type that they're looking at. They couldn't really do small multifamily there, there's just not enough room, but it does make those two lots viable.
Did someone explain that to them at Planning Commission?
Yes, we did.
Did they understood that when they left?
Yes.
Okay.
So staff went through the rationale. Again, it meets the development pattern of the area. It is compatible and a zone change is a much more preferable thing than a variance to the zoning ordinance and so this really actually solves that problem. So staff does recommend approval from the rezone from the RS1, single-family residential to the low-rise multifamily residential at 610 North Van Buren and 611 North Jackson. Planning Commission did recommend approval with this with a 5-0 vote in their August meeting. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I'll start off, Aaron. My question is, with this location, does it fall into any of the overlays, the cultural district? Or, I know that runs down across Central and goes, I don't know how far.
It does not reach this area and the design districts does not. I believe it is in the open structure overlay, which is the carport overlay as we commonly call it. But that would be the only overlay that it may be a part of.
I would make sure the developer is certainly aware of that as it moves forward. With that, I'll tee this off to you, Patrick. This one's in your district.
I don't have too much to say on it. I mean, it utilizes properties that haven't been used, so that's always a good thing for the city and hopefully provides some affordable housing for families. So it's a win-win in my book. I motion to approve.
Second. I have a first from Patrick and a second from Tommy Hebert. Any public comment, Heather?
None.
With none, we'll look for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 7-0. With that, we'll move into closed session, executive session under the provision of Government Code of Open Government Ethics, subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 551, Open Meetings, subchapter D, exceptions to requirements to that meetings be open under the following sections. A, Section 551-072, deliberations about real property regarding 70 East 43. Section B, 551-087, business prospect negotiations regarding, one, Project Falcon, Project Phoenix, Project Hyperspace, Project Gateway, Project Looking Glass. Item C, Section 551-071, consultation with attorney regarding possible action authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute documents necessary to allow encumbrance of Skyline's leasehold estate interest in the lease of City Airport property, commonly known as 8926 Hangar Road, San Angelo, Texas. With that, we're going to move into closed session.
Start with agenda item eight, follow-up and administrative issues. A, consider items discussed in executive session if needed, we need to get a statement. Mr. Hebert?
I will make a motion to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute documents necessary to allow encumbrance of Skyline's leasehold estate interest in the lease of City Airport properly, commonly known as 8926 Hanger Road, San Angelo, Texas.
I need a second. A second by Joe Self. With no public comment, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item A for that passes, six zero. Item B, considering approving various board nominations, Design and Historic Review Commission Luke Braim, SMD one to a second term ending September 2027. Also, Fort Concho Museum Board Donald Barnhart, mayor to a third term, and Tracy Simpson, mayor to a second term, both ending January 2027. On the Public Art Commission, Gail Stillwell, mayor to a first full term ending April of 2027. And Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Trey Holmes, SMD three, to a second term ending July 2027. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
I have it first from Karen.
One second.
And I got a second from Joe and Mary.
You have a little second.
We'll say that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With no opposed, B for appointments passes, six zero. Announcements and considerations of future agenda items. Does anybody have anything they want to cover?
Move we adjourn.
Got it first. A second from Joe Self. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nice job.